...in terms of heat and air, but we're not going to.
We'll go ahead.
I'll come pick up that fan.
We'll go ahead and start. I don't, I'll dispense with the prayer and the pledge of allegiance. We'd like to welcome the island planning and the mainland planning commissions. You asked for some specific information for today, and Jimmy will be providing that to you. Just a couple of informal announcements. The ladies' room is right off the side of the door, and then right down that little hallway there, it goes into the main lobby. It's right on the right there, and then the men's room is right across the way. We have snacks and food. Thanks for the heat and the cheers, that's fine. I'd like to first of all start off with just, so everyone can get familiar, to start our commission, and I'm Don Elliott, the chairman, and start with Mr. Brown, Dave Ford, and Cliff Adams, the mark commissioners. So, well, let's get started.
Okay, if you want to just introduce yourselves.
Joel Willis.
Odessa Woods.
Patrick Duncan.
Desiree Watson, chair.
Stan Opry.
Vice chair.
Ed Meadows.
Gene Lee.
Bill Egy.
Gary Neville, chairman of mainland.
Tim Markey.
David Sannier.
And with that, we'll start with Mr. Duncan. Okay, cool. Appreciate the opportunity to talk to everyone and provide some responses this morning about specific questions you guys had. Took the liberty to make an outline of what I'll be talking about, and on the back pages are copies of the questions that were pre-submitted, and I'm trying my best to give you a perspective as we see it. So.
Thank you.
Do you have an excellent?
Yeah.
Carl.
Janice.
Okay. Anybody else who comes up? What teams they have? All right. Just going through our quick, I'm gonna do, I'm trying to do a very hurried water and sewer, joint water and sewer commission here. One of the first things I want to remind everybody of is something that I've been stressing in all the opportunities I've had to go and speak in the community is that joint water and sewer commission is the life's blood of our community in my mind. And I know I may have a prejudiced view of things, but certainly, I think we all agree that water and sewer utility is forming at a high level, and it's strong, and is well positioned for the long run. The community as a whole is better positioned for the short term and the long run. Well, you know, quality of life goes up, economics, the opportunities that we have, they're all enhanced by a high-performance water and sewer utility. A little quick history of it, I think most of you probably already know this, joint water and sewer commission is a joint utility that was providing the city and the county's utilities back in 2008. Since that time, they've changed and had, went from a five-person commission to a seven-person commission to get a little more, a little broader representation out in the community. Certainly, the current form is a pretty high-functioning group. We've got a lot of very knowledgeable, experienced members on our commission, and bring a lot of expertise from the technical and financial realm to the board, and it's real been a big help in a lot of areas for us. A few quick facts about our utility. The fact is that we have 30,000 accounts approximately in our utility. Probably have 80,000, 85,000, maybe 90,000 total residents in our county. So, if you do the arithmetic, we're 20,000 of those accounts residential, 10,000 of commercial or industrial. There's a big chunk of our population that don't receive any direct services from us, or not billed by us in any way, shape, or form. So, you can see, we've got a big mission to serve the county as a whole, and only a fraction of our community has actually got skin in the game, so to speak, when it comes, while that's true, everybody benefits from this utility being here, everybody. Either through the building for their employers to function because they use the service indirectly when they go out in the community to do other things. Joint Water and Sewer inherited a kind of collage of issues, as you might expect, when they were formed. The list in front of you, rolling stock had aged, there was a lot of trucks and vehicles that were in poor shape. We're still struggling to get ahead of that as I speak. Fixed assets have been allowed to get into poor condition. Like all the utilities around the country, we've got a situation where, you know, out of sight, out of mind, everybody understands that about a water and sewer utility. It's always easier to, for the folks that are in charge of the money and policymakers to fix the things they can see, things that citizens see, the streets, roads, bridges, signals, things that drainage, things that are bug-ridden and obvious to them. But the water and sewer part, like in most communities around the country, with some few exceptions, has seen decades and decades of neglect or poor maintenance, to say the least. Anyway, so we've got issues out there that have got, poor asset documentation, certainly a lot of the assets were transferred, documentation that was incomplete or incorrect. We had personality issues from staff that came on board, employee problems initially, and I think folks that preceded me have done a pretty good job of figuring out where to give people better opportunities to be, to help us succeed in a better way. Disjointed systems of the combined, that would combine the water systems and the sewer systems for the county will be constructed and designed over time. Weren't, nobody was sitting around thinking, oh, one of these days we're gonna have to hook up with the city and figure it out, when and where to do that, how that would all work together. So, they're not really, at this point, synergistic as you would expect a water and sewer system to be. The redundancy, particularly on the water side, and by better fire protection, better overall level of service, is just starting to come into play. We're starting to make cross connections, and starting to look at modeling of our, hydraulic modeling of our system, see what we can do to make our system function for our citizens. Heavy debt service versus the small customer base. One thing that we also inherited was a $50 million in debt for a small utility like this. For a small utility like this, that's a lot of debt. 30,000 customers shouldering $30 million, I mean, $50 million in debt was a big burden to get started on, and not tremendous reserves set up to help them out. Drug pressures, one of the things I've stressed as I've been here is, there's always that demand for us to provide capacity in water and sewer. One of the things about a fairly low-density population here in our county is the fact that we're being spread out in all directions. Developments are not following a quarter in one direction where we can concentrate our small population. The population is spread out everywhere. We're going north, we're going west, we're going south, and we're trying to do expansion needs out on St. Simon's Island and keep up with it all at the same time, which really spreads resources and makes it much more difficult for us to get all this done. Excuse me. Initial authority was pretty weak, so they didn't make some of the big decisions they would have if they had been a little bit stronger getting started. A lot of contractual liabilities were inherited by the utility. Underfunding reserves, as I mentioned, fee structures weren't adequate to cover some of the costs. Again, that's something that's pretty dominant thing or a common thing across the country that utilities all across the country, with some exceptions, have been apt to undercharge for what they were doing. Undercharge for capacity and future taps or future improvements weren't being charged properly against new development, is the case that's repeated over and over around the country. We talked about the underparkers, and last, but maybe the most important issue is our two biggest treatment plants, the one in Academy Creek, Dunbar Creek, our wastewater treatment plant, are probably needing a great deal of rehab and improvements. And that's important because it doesn't matter how, what you do to convey it, if you've got plenty of capacity to get it there, if you can't treat it once it gets there, you don't have what you need to be able to do the job, you're not gonna be able to function. So, we're about to take out a bond issue, you know, just FYI. The plan right now is, here in the next couple, three months, we're gonna be looking to take out a major bond issue to try to make the upgrades at the plants and to some of the major collection lines here in Brunswick and in the county that are a long overdue, and that if we don't do them, we're gonna have major problems down the road in a way that I don't think we can put off. We're at that point with both the plant and with those assets. And item five, I talked about, you know, again, we talked about, we've got 30,000 customers. There's a master plan that has been a moving target of sorts, but has been worked on at least four times since the, once right before the commission was formed, and three times, at least three times since the commission was formed. In the most recent reviews, after I've taken a look at it, staff, looked at a few other things that maybe got overlooked in some of the earlier reviews, we looked at it and said, okay, we had to do everything we needed to do to rehab existing assets, and if we did the things that were indicated we needed to do to keep with expansion, probable expansion going forward in the county, the numbers you see in front of you are what we'd be facing, 83 million in rehab and repair or replacement. That's the largest investment, well, we got this, we weren't out in the detail. 63 million in expansion needs, that is, to provide additional capacity in areas where we think there's growth in those kind of things over the next five years. There's no way, under God's green earth, that this 30,000 customer utility can provide that kind of capital improvements, not any. Not all that's gonna happen. Very small fraction of that's gonna happen, although I will say, the most critical items in that list, we talked about just a minute ago, treatment plants and some of the major trunk line collection lines on the wastewater side, we're gonna address. It's too or it's not to. We're gonna borrow money. Say this, it will push us to a point where we're at or near the very limits of our borrowing capacity after we do that. We'll be at a point where other significant needs will be, will be very, very challenged to move ahead in the next three or four years beyond this, to do other big needs type investments. Sewer pump station and capacity status, I think one of the issues that's been big since I got here was back.
Duncan, before you leave that, you said you can't do the 146 million, but how much can you do with the bond issue?
Well, we're, with the bond issue, we're looking at borrowing between the 2018 and the 2019 borrowings to get the two plants done, we're looking at it, and to do those big trunk lines I'm telling you about, they're, they're old steel reinforced concrete pipes that are like 30 inches in diameter, and they need to be replaced because the tops of those pipes have literally been eaten away by the rust and gases. We've gotta upsize them to accommodate the splotch project that we're doing, and to also to, well, both of the splotch projects need some accommodation, and this is part of that. But the total borrowing that I'm anticipating right now is right on the order of 45, 50 million dollars over the next two.
And that's just enough to cure your critical problem?
They'll fix the two plants, bring them back.
So, to get done what needs to be done, you'll still be $100 million short?
Yeah. That's accurate. And one of the things that I'll state here, because we've gone through the budget process this year to get ready for fiscal year of 17, 18, we looked at the rates. We're increasing the rates and looking at the definition of what EPA says is affordability, which is two point, the 2% to 2.5%, the water of your median income of the community, 2% to 2.5% of median income for sewer. And so, I don't know how EPA came up with the number of what. But we looked at the statistics of what our community, we focused in on Brunswick, which is probably the lower end of the things. It's got a lower median income than St. Simon's Island and the rest of the county. We will be right at that, the top end of that affordability. So, we've got, you know, a challenge there. We don't have room to play with rates, you know, it's the kind of thing we should have been working on these issues for years and years. But again, it's not uncommon, this is the kind of thing that's going on all over the country, everybody's having the same discussion. Well, we gotta deal with it.
So, we have an untouchable problem?
Well, it's a difficult problem. I'm not gonna say it's, every problem's solved.
Excuse me, I didn't mean that.
Yeah, it's just, it's a diff, it's gonna be a challenge. And I think right now, if I had to pick, my biggest task in this role is to solve that problem, the funding sources to make everything work, to make these things happen. But again, because again, back to item one, if we aren't functioning at a certain level, the community doesn't function at that level.
Isn't, isn't the county and the county commission somewhat responsible for trying to help you with that?
They do. We're bringing conversations with them all the time. Finding solutions, though, don't grow, it does grow in trees, and we're still looking for the out-of-the-box ideas to try to make some of this work. I know we've talked about, you know, how we can manage the tapping fees to get better expansion. I'm not sure what we're gonna do about the rate structure itself and how we accommodate that in light of the affordability issue, but I think one of the things we've gotta keep in mind is there's bigger challenges, there's community challenges, and we need everybody to work together.
Mr. Duncan, are you also looking at state programs for funding?
We're looking at a lot of things. I know.
Any federal grants available?
There's not a lot of money available at the state level. I'm not gonna say no, like here. There's, because all the utilities are in need, and you know how tight state and federal monies are now. Most states are barely meeting their budget. In fact, some of them are starting to look at things like taxing internet downloads. Crazy as that sounds, it's a reality in some states and several other states are looking at it. So, I guess when you're online, you download information about something, I guess they're digging you if you're living in the right place. Well, back to the state and federal grant type stuff, I know Commissioner Ford has poured over some stuff. We've looked at a few of these things, and I know that that may be a place where we can work with the county and the city, because CDBG is an area that the federal government tends to maintain funding for no matter what else they drive. But it will take us working with the city and county commissions to try to work our way into those applications each year. Because we're not entitled, the city or county, we'll have to be working each year to make applications, try to get whatever we can in a way of help out of those programs. But we're gonna investigate all of these grants that were brought to our attention just in case there's some that we can't fit into and some that we can apply. I don't in any respect think that we're gonna make a big dent in this list, but every little bit helps at this point. We're, you know, reaching in the couch cushions for coins now.
Jimmy.
Sir?
There's only one practical solution. You don't solve 100 million without a box.
Is that what?
But you don't solve 100 million with an out-of-the-box solution. Your borrowing will prohibit you, that'll cap you. Three years from now, three years from now, the county will be done with the current splotchs. The next splotch has to be for joint water and sewer. Coincidentally, a five-year, one penny splotch is 100 million dollars, just so you know.
Well. Excuse me, Jim, I appreciate your comments, but this is kinda just for the island planning and the mainland planning. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. If you don't mind. I forgot, that was, that brought to my attention earlier, and I forgot. But thank you, Jim. Back to the status of where we got, I was leading into our master plan and our capital improvements plan, and as we went through it the last iteration, it was finished up back last spring, it became apparent from the analysis that was done on our pump stations, our sewer pump stations, that many of our pump stations were basically outside their operating capacities beyond where they were intended to, I'll say it that way. Certainly, EPA and EPDA and utilities across the country have certain standards to which they designed to, and peaking factors that needed to be applied, once applied indicated we were under capacity on most of those stations. So, it's placed a great deal of pressure on us to come back, resolve those capacity issues, and we're gonna, in a minute here, we've brought in maps of various basins that we've got, we'll put those up for everybody to be able to take a look at, and tell us where we've got excess capacity or available capacity to grow. We're working on new capacity that will free up those opportunities, and where there is not sufficient capacity, and not currently an immediate-term plan for making those changes. And most of the critical bases in our community and in our county are being addressed or have been addressed, but not all. So, we'll be able to put that up. One of the things I wanna say about these maps before we take a look at them is, we're gonna be posting these online. This is a tool that you all can look at and have an idea, okay, we're gonna be doing a project over here in whatever area of town or whatever area of the county, you'll be able to take a look at and look at it based on the color coding of that area on our map online, you'll be able to determine. If it's red, you know there's not enough capacity right now, there's no plans to increase capacity. So, that's a, that's a data point you can, you can put away. If it's yellow, that means there's not enough capacity currently, but there is immediate work going on to generate more capacity in that basin. If it's green, there's currently excess available capacity where more growth or new houses or new development can occur. So, that'll be a tool that's gonna be available, and we'll take a closer look at that here in a minute. Path forward, one of the things that I'm trying to do today is inform each of you what our value is to this community, and hope that we can get everybody's support. As we move forward and start looking at some of Jimmy's crazy ideas, I want, I would hope that, you know, our understanding of what we're doing here, what we all expect for the benefit of our community, the quality of life here, we're all in the same sheet of music, that we gotta make sure this water and sewer utility is funded properly and getting things done they need to, to keep things going out in the community. With that, swap over to the second page, start going through the questions. Let's raise our sky, because everyone had a chance to look at the questions. Most of these were directed to the island planning. Go ahead, Jim.
I have a question before we move to the second page.
Sure.
In terms of obtaining splotchs, would that, are you like working with the local delegations to change your local act so that you can directly get splotch funds, which would also probably require changing the state law? I mean, that's one avenue.
It's, it's a possibility. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to that. It might be a little simpler, in fact, to manage if we could get a direct splotch, because I know one of the issues we had in this last splotch is there was two projects that were funded for the joint water and sewer commission, and we had to work pretty, pretty hard together with the county commission and their staff to get all the paperwork done, to get everything done, to facilitate the transfer of funds and the execution of projects. So, to your question, I think it would be a benefit, but I'll take it any way we can get it at this point.
Yeah, could you, may have written the numbers down wrong, so 30,000 customers and commercial is 20 and residential is 10?
I said it that way, I've got it backwards. 20,000 residential, 10,000 is commercial and industrial.
So, on the islands, you know, I don't think we know how many people are over there, but a lot of people think it's somewhere between 12 and 18, depending on the season. But I know you know how many meters are there.
I don't wanna talk for the kids.
And if we have 20 total in the county, that would say St. Simon's is more than half of us, is that right?
Sounds like it. John, you know how many meters across SSI?
Probably 10,000, 15,000.
So, about that. But if you got 12,000 in population or 18,000, you're not, you know, it's not one per person per meter. So, that is no.
Yeah, understood, okay. So, half, half the, half of your customers, residential, are on island.
Sounds like it. Don't hold me to it, because we can grill that.
That would be, that would be.
10,000 about?
That's totally meters, commercial and residential.
On island, okay, so we'd have to refine that a little bit. Any other questions before we? None? We can go. First question that's gonna come in is, how does JWC view the actions of IPC in approving new developments that affect sewer and water capacity issues? And this answer probably applies to the Glen County Planning Commission just as much as what IPC. My feeling is, we're here, we wanna sustain the very best quality of service we can, but ultimately, we're, we've gotta, all we can really do is give you all the facts. How much capacity is available, you know, is, if there's not enough, are there plans for more capacity? Ultimately, we, you know, when we review a set of plans, staff here is making comments on those plans, if there's a problem with capacity, and we forward it on. Now, if the plans get approved, or if you all decide to approve a particular development, you know, you're the policymakers. All we can do is provide the information. I would say that logically, you would expect that if there was a long-term problem with capacity, none of you would ever approve a development. And it probably wouldn't get to you because I don't believe that the county staff would approve it. Just FYI. All we can do is provide the facts, as we know, we're not, we're not able to really put the brakes on anything, and all we can do is be able to let everybody know what the situation is. put the brakes on anything, all we can do is let everybody know what the situation is. Actually, the agreement per the county ordinances, question A, what suggestions do you have for how IPC should consider the comments that JWC provides in making that determination, in parentheses, such as wording until such time? Let it get back into what I was saying before. If we've got plans on the docket to do something, we can tell you at such time as we make such and such, whatever the changes are that we're going to get to, that means there's, at some point, the developer will be compliant with our ability to provide service. That's all I can tell you. Again, it's an effort to provide facts, it's not to say, you know, we would make you or offer for you to make a commitment on a development that's white on capacity that should come. One of the things we've been doing in areas where we had commitments or liabilities, or perceived liabilities in some cases, to provide capacity for some developments where there was none, but we were working on it, we've sold them taps so they can get things done, and we've had them sign essentially hold harmless agreements. Whereas hold harmless, we know there's work going on, and they're willing to take the risk of building a house or a building of some kind, a development of some kind, and wait for us to finish the project. They can sign the hold harmless, pay their tap fee, and get started. For timing purposes, that helps sometimes. But it doesn't commit absolutely unless we know absolutely that there is a finished date out there, or that there is capacity well above and beyond that required for a particular development that's coming. So again, it's not an absolute thing, but we do make the exceptions where we've had developers or builders sign hold harmless agreements to allow them to get moving on property that's been platted previously. This is not on new developments.
You also, don't you have a process where you can enter an agreement with a developer where they can build the infrastructure required?
We do.
Or do y'all build it, or they just pay for it, or who builds it?
The way it works is, we've been, the only time we've done it so far, we've only had one successful application of what you're talking about, unsolicited proposals. We've talked to a number of developers about such things on a number of occasions I've got here, but we only had one that made it to execution. And basically, what we did was, we looked at what they were requiring, what they needed for their help, we signed the agreement with them, they wrote us a check, agreed upon amount of funding for a specific modification system asset. We've taken their check, ordered materials, and then we do the upgrades ourselves. So that does get funded through us. I'm not going to tell you that's the way it'll work every single time, but that's the way on the one occasions it's worked so far.
But that's an option for developers?
It is, and it's also getting back to expansion. You know, we were talking about the funding issues a while ago. For groups of developers or somebody that's well-heeled enough, larger asset needs or asset needs for expansion, that maybe that's another solution that can be, for the folks out in the development world here locally, could investigate and maybe try to take advantage of. When we tell them our unsolicited proposals, we give these folks a chance to get payback on their investment. There's other people tie on, they're getting 70, 30 split of whatever their tap fees are for that particular asset, until they get their initial investment paid off. So that's a tool.
I noticed in this section though, where you're talking about how you respond to the water and sewer capacity, you say provided funding. I mean, that's issued a great out, because we've already discussed, there is no funding. And so, you know, it seems to me you ought to maybe try to tie that down some about not just say, well, if we have the money, we'll do it. I mean, will you have the money in a reasonable period of time, or?
It depends on the situation and what is needed. I'll tell you right now, if somebody came to me and said, we need you to invest, we need joint water and sewer commission to invest a million bucks to do development coming up over here at Trade Winds, we don't have a million dollars. You know, if the owners of Trade Winds had a million bucks, they could walk in and we'd work the unsolicited proposal, or we'd have to borrow money, or we don't have it right now to do it.
I guess I'm saying is that on the planning commissions, we need as definitive as you can be, and not just have outs in there, which is saying.
This is not an out. What I, the way I see it Stan, is what this is, is telling you the facts. If somebody comes in, I'm not going to, for everybody that comes in and says they want more capacity, we're not just sitting there and saying, sure, whatever you need, if I've got the money, I'm going to do it for you. That's not the way it works. We are not giving everybody, and if I conveyed that, I didn't mean to. It's more the case of, we want to help the community in every way possible, but I don't know that we're going to be able to make, you know, realistically, there's no way we can meet every developer's.
Well, we've already discussed the fact that you're 100 million dollar short.
I think the thing you all need to rely on is, when you get a set of plans, do we say, is there a current capacity, or is there a current project underway to generate the capacity required for that development? Not worry about whether we've got the funds or not. If we say we've got, you know, project in process, we've already identified the funds for that particular piece. I hope that helps.
Also, one thing that, if a developer had come to you and said that he wanted to work with you and provide funds for extending the lines, and you don't have the money to do, that would be some information we would like to have as well.
Okay, yeah, I'm certain we can pass that along. That would be part of the, okay, we have identified funding source for the project that would.
And if the commission tells the planning group that there is not capacity, what would you expect the planning commission to do with that information?
If we told you there's not capacity, I mean, my expectation as a citizen would be, you wouldn't let somebody build not having capacity. You know, you'd have to wait until there was capacity, or at least some formal project plan being executed to provide that capacity. If we say there's not capacity, but there is a project underway that will yield capacity by about six months from now, or about 12 months from now, or three years from now, then you got to take it in, you know, developer's willing to go at risk, that's up to y'all then, if you want to let him take that risk. I can give you that information, but then, you know, logically, do you let those folks go ahead? With our assurances, if we say there's a project underway, or actually, in the, let me give you an example, the sploth project right now, it's going to free up a lot of North Mainland capacity. The first little phase is going to carve out a little chunk, maybe six, eight months from now, but the bigger capacity is probably 18 to 24 months away. Somebody needs a lot of capacity, and they need to wait on another project, so the county folks are just going to have to take that into, you know, do we want to let these guys get started now and wait on the sure project to come, or do we hold them up for a while?
So if the planning commission, either one of them approves a development where there is not capacity, what kind of position does that put the county in?
It violates your ordinance.
What?
Yeah, I'm from a legal standpoint, I don't know. I'm not sure.
So basically, it should be like a go-no-go if you've got capacity or not, or a deferral until such time as there is capacity?
That's, again, that's a policy decision. I'm going to say, I'm not opposed, if we know there's capacity coming, that's already in the works, that's already, you know, we're doing the engineering, we're doing the construction, some phase of making that capacity happen, I'm not opposed, I wouldn't be personally opposed if you guys provided the capacity plan, will meet the needs of that development. And there's not only six other developments standing in line to consume all that capacity, but we wouldn't send you an analysis like that.
But that should come in as a recommendation from the staff, that recommend it be deferred until such time as capacity available, or a statement of fact that planned capacity for that material is on or about this period of time. So we would have that information to use in the decision-making process.
Let me address the issue, and it's, I think, a broader issue than what we're really talking about right now. When you all approve a developer's plan and his plan, and let's say, use a residential, he says he's going to build 400 homes, okay, do we have the capacity for those 400 homes today? And we say, yes, we do. And then, you know, a year down the road, he's kind of, you know, or she, is not really doing much, and he's still got a promise of 400 homes. And then somebody else comes in and says, oh, I'd like to build 600 homes, and they're feeding into the same basin. Well, what do we do at that point? This guy is not really moving very fast, his project seems to be not working. This guy wants to build 600 homes, and he thinks that he can go, but we have 400 homes over here, and now we're going to tell this guy, no, you can't do that. So we need, in my opinion, and this is not necessarily shared by all of my fellow commissioners, a better strategic plan in which, when the developer submits, I'm going to build 400 homes, he needs to give us how he's going to do that over the years. And then, he's approved in the phases that he does, so he doesn't have all 400 plats or lots approved for taps. And the next guy that comes in, he has to do the same thing. Now, if we're doing our job properly, we're tracking that capacity and how much we're eating on the entire system. We'll know what the capacity of the sewer plant is, we'll know what the capacity is at the main lines, and then it is up to us to resource the growth of that over a phase time. That way, water sewer is not holding and not being able to, because those 400 taps, he's not going to want to buy the taps for those at the prices that they are. We don't necessarily want to sell him 400 taps for the 20 years at today's prices, because the only way that we obtain capital for expansion of the system currently is through selling taps. Sploths is a way to get around that or to help that, but today, that's what we have to do. So I think that if we take our strategic planning process and start to ask the developer more detailed questions about how he sees his development unfolding, that that would work a lot better. Out, friend, great township is huge, but they're not going to consume all those taps in the near term. We'll have plenty of capacity to meet that requirement as we see it right now, with what we're doing on 2032. It also will provide the capability that we need for, I think, Sinclair plantation in the future. It's not there yet, but they're putting sidewalks back down today, so we're pretty close to having 2032 done. At some point, we have to go back in and upsize the lift station 2032 to do it, and that's on the list of things to do. Talking sewer, but we also have to look at water in that space.
But you do sell taps. I mean, the developer, if at the end of the day, he said, I want 400 taps, and you got the capacity, do you sell them?
If I've got the capacity, yes.
You got the capacity, you sell them. But that's protected itself for the future.
That's true, and that's something that, we need to relook that policy right now, because we really don't want to sell all the capacity out.
At today's prices.
At today's prices.
That would tie all up, period, because what Commissioner Elliott's saying, you get these folks that buy out mass quantities, man, when they hoard up all the capacity, they're doing, buying it up for the next 20 years of their business, 10 years of their business, you know, it's kind of one of those, what's best for the community kind of thing.
That's something that your commission has to.
Has to wrestle with.
That's not the, we, and he'll say.
And another point on the taps, when you buy a tap, assuming that you buy all 400, then you start having to pay the administrative debt service fee that goes along with it, okay? When we do the borrowing that we're going to, think we're going to do, then that will go on the debt service fee. Now, to the rate payers, what will happen is we will reduce the amount that's on the rate that they put in for what's called R and R, restoring manure, so that the burden on them, when they pick up the additional requirement on the REU side of it, won't be as great. But that developer that's got all those taps and is paid for it, is going to be paying into the water sewer commission that administrative charge and the debt service charge. So they're going to have to do some cost-benefit analysis that they're going to have to look at, is that how many taps they want to buy, and that's under the current policy. We may have to look at the policy and see if that needs to stay.
It's tricky.
So you're actually talking about altering your first-come, first-served policy, right? Looking at that? Because the 400 person, home person would be the first come to say, I want 400.
Well, I'm saying, it puts us in a very bad situation, because he's not, let's say that you approve a 400 plot area and he doesn't buy all those taps, okay? If he doesn't buy all those taps, then those taps are available, and that's how we got into the situation to begin with. We weren't really tracking capacity well enough, so that we knew when to say, hold up, until, you know, I went and said, stop, you know? So the developer, his problem is, well, do I buy all 400 taps to guarantee that I have it? And what we instituted last year was such that you can buy all 400 taps, but you're going to pay for those every month, in paying us part of the bill, okay? As that grows, the developer may have some issues with that. And if we ever go to a, like a lot of utilities are going to now, where you have a base level of service that you buy, so that you, I don't want, the number I don't want to say, but you have a certain number of gallons that you pay for every month, and that should water bill, and as long as you stay within the, that is a fixed fee, so to speak. And we ever move to that, then that would be another added charge on the developer that has bought all 400 taps, is going to have to take on.
Could you sell taps and say that they have to be utilized or hooked on to within an extra period of time from the date of sale?
We have discussed that.
That's not a bad idea.
You know, but we, in fact, we started off that way.
Did we?
Or George, you penalty, I thought it was.
No, it's, it becomes a problem for us, and we'll look at that again.
I don't think that's a bad idea at all.
So it was noted by all that the planning commissions make a policy decision, and I'm aware, I think we're all aware, that you all have been concerned about certain decisions that you can't make because of the consent order and the concern about the federal penalties and so forth for that. So here's my question. The county considers the planning commission members to be county employees. If the planning, so do the county, do the planning commission- If the planning, so do the county, do the planning commissions have any liability if we approve a new development that has, if no capacity exists?
I will. I'm gonna say, I have an opinion about that, but we have an attorney in the room.
Uh, and I will answer that question offline.
I, I think this is very helpful, because I think, you know, we're all, we're all trying to represent the public of the county here, and we have our different hats on, and this is an excellent forum to bring some of these questions forward.
I think, I think that, you know, if everything has been being asked over the last two or three years, not, not just liability, but how do you deal with an application, if everything, if everything else looks okay to Ed, and he wants to approve it, but there's a question about capacity, with John Ward and Silver, right? And I think that's really the part of the question. I'm not sure how that's supposed to work right now, but I'll tell you how I would like to see it work, okay? Especially when you throw out the question of liability. I'd like to see it where, and, and Will is listening to me, so he can look at it. I'd like to see it work where, say, all requirements are met, you know, y'all have to put a statement to your decision, all requirements are met, except John Ward Sewer, we have issues with John Ward Sewer, capacity, uh, in sewer, whether it's water or both. And if we have a statement here from John Ward Sewer, what those issues are, and they would have to be dealt with.
So.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I'm paraphrasing, you're saying approval contingent upon.
Approval, yeah, it has to be, it has to be in a way to kinda, kinda help us, help us work to a point where the island planning commission and the mainland planning commission have done everything they could do, but these things are outside your responsibility, because over here where I'm sitting down, well, our, our responsibility is to provide water and silver and maintain those systems to do that, and it's not given county policy. You know, it's not to give you more direction, okay? We can, we can tell you what the status is of the system for a particular applicant that's coming up, you know, where that is geographically in the system, where that is in the system. We can handle that, if we can't handle that, I think we can, we can be very clear about that, because one thing that John Ward Sewer, the people, I've only been here a few months, but the folks have been here for a while, I believe they know the shape of the system. Just, I mean, one incident counted to other, they have, they have looked at this system. Too many people were looking at it way, way too many years, just hoping it would all work somehow, without putting you on the verge of, but, but that's all they're turning around. It, I think, I think John Ward Sewer really, I mean, as, as far as inventory in that system and understanding the shape of that system throughout the island, throughout the mainland, I believe they know that as well as they can, as they identify. And look, we just had some pictures last week, uh, where there's some cameras were run down into some silver to go to mainland, and we, we learned what we know is a bad system, and really worse than we thought, okay?
That's the pipe I was talking about.
That's the pipe you're talking about, but we're not, we don't have our heads, heads in the same, we're trying to identify where all the issues are, because it's very important to Glen County that we do that to deliver the surplus we have to deliver as many as a year to come. And, and, and I want to talk about the dollars here real quick, and Mr. Gilmore brought up, and I'm glad he did, about the splot, but when we're talking about money and, and the director here mentioned, you know, we don't know where the money's gonna come from. Well, I have ditched the same thing with my fellow commission members here about splot funding. That is a very, there's a very good chance that that could, you know, a little over three years from now, you know, if this community is willing and supportive of it, you know, there's a potential $100 million in the next splot. And would it all go to John Ward and Silver? I have no idea. I would pitch for at least some of it to go, but the biggest question about that money in the next splot is, would the community support it? You know, we gotta have strong community support to get there, so just keep that in mind, although to talk about it, one other thing I think we could look at in terms of funding, I'm getting off track, I just wanna cover this one mine, is, you know, with the Navy went into Cameron County, federal government paid impact, but local impact by the local government, they built libraries, fire stations, schools, a little bit of everything. John Ward Sewer's taken over the water and sewer system out of Lexington. It's about the same shape as all of the water and sewer system outside of Lexington before JWSC took it over. I feel like that there's a, there's room to go to the federal government, even if it's actually a fact, and that's their impact money, the local government. Try to take that thing over and bring it up to speed, and while you're listening to me, yeah, there's another headache that we have, but I feel like there's a big case could be made to the federal government to give local impact, local, local, local community impact grants, and that could be substantial money if we could invest in that, we're gonna work on that. But I'll go back to Ed's question, as far as liability, it may be the best thing that look at, look at, see if we can put statements that qualify IPC and MPC's approval. And if you can get there, where you can approve an application, everything except for questions about water and silver, you know, put a statement qualification that this has got to be, you know, we, we can approve this, but the building permit should not be allowed by the county unless, unless John Ward Sewer is satisfied they can, they can provide a tiny, so that's my thoughts on it.
Excuse me, I know you had this struggling issue of a number of customers, you know, ratepayers, and they're addressable ratepayers, and there's this concern about giving water service if you don't get sewer service. And I've heard this, and.
I'm more concerned the other way around, but keep going. Folks get sewer service without.
Have you considered, have you considered embracing or not being everything to everybody? I mean, you can't serve the whole county, that, that ain't happening.
No, and, and we're a little.
So, so why not embrace new technologies like these sewage septic systems in a box? All right?
On-site treatment.
On-site for small residential homes, home sites. I mean, these things have 95% treatment rates.
Far as I'm concerned, that's not a decision here. The way the ordinance is raised, as I recall it, if you're within 500 feet of sewer assets, you tie on, unless there's some, I got across several other property owners, that kind of thing, or unless there's no capacity. Twice written variances for folks that told them, I'll write you a variance, cause there is not capacity for you to tie on, even though you're within 500 feet. And I left it to them to work out the details with the county, um, county, this Georgia Health, Part, Part Hill, as to whether they could comply with some other system they would approve. So I'm not holding that kind of a issue up. If somebody has that and wanna bring it to the table, as long as we're in agreement, that's their alternatives, I'll, I'll help them out on that. Uh, Gene asked a question, Gene, you asked a question before I go, uh, before I forgot about it, you were in the comment section. If we say there's no plans, I mean, excuse me, there's no capacity, and there's no plans, take it to the bank. If, if we say there's no capacity, but there are current plans for capacity that would accommodate this development, by some date, maybe if we know at that point in time on a particular situation, that's gonna be in there. So you guys are getting that in essence, I think we've done a lot of communication with planning folks at the county and Pam Thompson, we've done a lot of coordination to make sure we're communicating the right information, so you all have what you need. If you don't get that, or if you think there's something away, we're communicating, and you see set of plans, give us a call, we, we just need to make sure we're all on the same sheet of music, we wanna get you what you need.
It's basically a no-go-go with A, B, C, and D options, you know? You have capacity, so that gives us the opportunity to approve if all other things are equal. You don't have capacity, but it's planned within 12 months, or whatever, or there's, there is capacity, you know, there's some caveats there, and if we have that data, then that would give us an opportunity. If somebody's doing a presentation that's don't take a year and a half to do, then we might feel more compelled to approve it.
Yeah.
But if there's.
And that's what we're trying to do.
If we're five years down the road, then why give them an opportunity to, or an option to build something?
Consume the capacity now and.
The, another one was to put on their option is that we're in negotiations with the developers, as we talked earlier, for them to do.
We could do that, but I wouldn't hang my hat on, make a decision over negotiations, because negotiations are unpredictable.
We've had in our meeting where a developer has agreed in the meeting to do the upgrade.
Yeah, but they have it under sign by us.
Yeah, yeah.
That's what you really need. We've already made an agreement that he will do.
Whatever they.
That's right, and, and we've worked that out.
Make a quick comment about what Mike said about splot. From the voter's perspective, you've gotta look at numbers. If you've got 30,000 customers, we've got 80,000 voters, don't take rocket science. Figure that there's 30,000 folks out there who are gonna not be in favor of paying the splot.
The counts don't measure up to the number of voters, but I will say this, one of the, one of the jobs I've got, and I emphasize to the staff here, is we've gotta convince those non-ratepayers that there is value in supporting this utility in those kind of out-of-the-box manners. If they understand we can't provide the, uh, uh, capacity because of new developments going in, and houses can't get built, it means jobs, it means tax revenues, that means the county can't provide the basic services they provide in the way of police protection, fire protection, storming drainage, planning, whatever else, the county does a plethora of things, everybody, whether you're buying water and sewer from us or not, benefits from it, and therefore, they need to be, we've gotta educate folks on what's going on and why it is important to support whatever we do, even if they don't have skin in the game every month when it's build time. Gary, you keep raising your hand, were you?
Well, I was gonna say, maybe it sounds like that developer needs to either get a recommendation with county staff or his development team to come to JWSC first before they start really grinding on some development.
Some, some of them do, in fact, we've been talking about charging them a meeting fee for folks that are on our door a lot. Developers, a lot of times their engineers are in the very early phases of a piece of property before it gets going, they'll come and, and talk to us about capacity. Not all, but there is some of that that goes on.
Yeah, I wanna say something to Gene about, he just called up about politics, we're talking about politics. Folks that don't have water and sewer don't wanna pay, those that do have it. When we were in the, one of our discussions over at the Board of Commissioners, about trying to put together a splot to get it passed, we first talked about, it might have been Commissioner Rudson that thrown out $25 million for John Ward Sewer, but that just, I could tell they didn't get a whole lot of good buy-in from the fellow commissioners.
Let me correct that, I said, give them all of it.
All of it, all of it.
That didn't go anywhere, so.
So, but I think this is instructive for everybody here, when we talk about the next splot, because, but anyhow, at some point, I just realized, and I felt like, you know, we've gotta do something, we, we've gotta do something to help JWSC, and so I threw out a $15 million figure, that stuff, don't ask me how, $15 million anyhow, it's done. Now, folks are out there voting on it, I represent District One, there's probably less water and silver in District One than any other district. I proposed 15 million, I supported helping JWSC. The only district that did not vote as a district, for, for splot, District One, by district, and I'd do it again, you know, three years from now, three and a half years from now, I'd do it again, because it is gonna take funding, every source we can get funding from, to get ahead of the curve, that JWSC was really handed a, I, I, I don't think you could run something in the ground worse than JWSC, has been run in the ground, we can't, and with the debt to go with it. Kind of, you know, if you've got a brand-new car out here in the driveway, and you're making $400,000 payments on it, that's one thing, but when it is, everything on it is broken, and you're making $400,000 payments on it, it hurts, it hurts, and you look at every day, how can you get a new car to get over this old broken one? That's what we are, and, but things are falling into place, and if we're gonna get there, can we tell you where the money's gonna come from? No, but we'll get there. But splot, splot for three and a half years, splot have really needed to support, and it's not JWSC and what JW, where JWSC sits in the scheme of things in Glen County, it's gotta be our office, and it's not funding properly, we're gonna, we're gonna be sitting here talking about these same things over and over, we gotta do, yeah, on the offensive.
One of, one of the things is for sure, and into Commissioner Browning's point, is that there are a lot of liabilities out there in the ground right now for us, and I know that we're catching the worst, I, but, you know, my fear is, there'll come a time where we can't, we can't do enough to manage it all. The mandates are gonna get real expensive, and everybody here knows the old commercial, pay me now or pay me later? Well, it's important, we're letting these things eventually start to happen on, on a routine basis, and we're, we're having to catch behind and do emergency repairs, those kind of things, it's, pay me later is a pretty expensive price. Marissa, you want to ask a question?
I was curious about the liability issue for the, the planning commissions. Should we require every person to do a whole harmless?
No, no, this is, the whole harmless was meant for folks that were anxious to get started, and the assets weren't necessarily in place just yet, and, you know, you never, when you're working on a project, everybody in here that's ever had anything to do with construction knows, things happen, materials don't show up that you expect, the rain doesn't cooperate, the right guy that has the skills to do something didn't make it, even though he said for sure for the last five days in a row he was gonna be out there. Everybody knows it, those same kind of things happen, even though we lay out a plan for a developer and say, okay, it's gonna be six months, they have to sign that whole harmless just in case the things are out of our control. But if there's already sewer there, or already water there, you know, to meet their needs, there's nobody in there provided to sign in that whole harmless.
Right, but if there's, if anything comes for us, and it says there either is no capacity or there will be capacity, that, that person should have a whole harmless.
Yeah.
Because if it's not capacity by that date, are they gonna hold us accountable?
If there's no capacity.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Go ahead.
So this kind of ties.
So, this kind of ties in with what Commissioner Browning was saying earlier, and I think a question came up over here about the unsolicited proposals. Pam couldn't be here today because she's in training, and I don't want to speak for her necessarily, but I believe that her policy going forward will be that if there's something that comes before than one of the planning commissions, unless she gets a statement from the JWSC that either capacity is available or currently available, or capacity will be, there's a project currently underway that will provide capacity within X amount of time, that she will not forward that to the planning commissions. If it's a, well, we have an agreement in principle to do an unsolicited proposal, uh, then those will not be forwarded to y'all until we get something from the planning commission that says, I mean, I'm sorry, from the JWSC that says there's capacity or there presumably will be. So, that should address a lot of that. So, you should not be getting applications in front of you where it says there's no capacity. Well, we think we've got something worked out.
We've already gotten some that say.
We have in the past, yes. And I think Pam is trying to address that with a new policy.
I think Pam has said, she's not gonna say anything to the planning commissions. It's not the plan. All the different items included, JWSC.
And we have in the past, to your point, Commissioner Browning, there were some instances where, say, a preliminary plat came forward and there wasn't a specific plan in place at that time for capacity, and the planning commission approved it subject to a statement on the preliminary plat, basically saying, there's not capacity now, capacity's not guaranteed, and they won't get construction plans until such time as capacity, um, is available. Right. And so, but again, I think Pam is formulating a new policy to try to head those things off and keep that coming before. And she can provide more details about that once she gets back.
One of the items that, one of the questions that came up, if we move along just for a second, we talked about the capacity on the island at the Dunbar Creek, and there's a question of, uh, the JWSC's expressed concern about sewer treatment system, uh, being near a capacity. From that perspective, how should I be seen considering the proposed proposals that require hookups if capacity is not available? Start on that side. Basically, we're not gonna send anything to anybody, uh, that says there's capacity if there's not capacity. And the first test is, is there treatment capacity? So, that's not gonna happen. What I have done today is tried to put together a status of what's going on at Dunbar Creek. Where we're at in the realm of things for that particular facility. And as you look at it, the plants, okay, looking at that top table, the plants permitted at 4 million gallons per day, uh, the current permitted REUs, or REUs that are being consumed by businesses or residential folks, folks that are out there using capacity, is 13,333 approximately. And I, and I, excuse me, that's the total for 4 million. I'm sorry. Got ahead of myself.
How many, how calculated are you here?
What is an REU?
I'm sorry.
Residential equivalent city unit.
That's right. Deseret knows.
It's, 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 it's what the engineering standards say is the proximal amount for a typical residential home would consume in a day's, day's time. And I guess that's with 2.76 people living in the house. I don't know how they come up with it. But 300 gallons a day per household is considered an REU. You know, you can argue with the changes in fixtures and things, they more or less, but, you know, right now, that's the standard by which everybody's hanging their hats. Thank you for stopping us.
Okay, I want to drive a little bit more. That's, that's a residential unit. If you're looking at somebody that wants to build a hotel or wants to build a restaurant, you need to be able to understand what the REU calculation is for that restaurant or that hotel is, because it differs on the capacity. And, and that's how it'll help you keep track of the capacity issues. And we keep, try, try to keep it simple, just by REUs, and, and that way you can understand the capacity thing.
But, but having said, thank you, Commissioner. But having said that, 4 million gallons a day equates to about 13,333 of these REUs. If everybody was using house. Currently, uh, sorry for the misspelling there, I didn't catch that till just a second, but the current monthly daily average out at Dunbar is 2.5 million actual flow going into the plant. And that equates to 8,333. The number of REUs at 80% of capacity is 10,667 if you're, if you're using 80% of your capacity. Why don't I bring up 80%? Because 80% mark is the point at which EPA says you need to be starting on your design for the next, uh, increase in capacity. You don't wait till you're right at 100%. You start at 20%, you start doing your design and making your, doing the analysis, getting ready to construct it so that when you, before you hit 100% of capacity, you've already constructed the new capacity. You're never in a situation where you would doubt or have to shut somebody down. I'm saying that. So, at 80%, 10,667 taps will have been issued, proximal. So, the current availability of taps, when now the time we hit 80% on Dunbar, would be If we went all the way to build out max capacity of 4 million gallons a day without adding capacity, it would yield at 100% capacity, we got 5,000 more taps left to where we're out of capacity. So, that gives you an idea. If on the island, I know community-wide, we're, we sold a little over 600 REUs the past year. And I apologize, I don't know what fraction of them went to the island and what percentage of them stayed on this side of the causeway. But let's just say it's 200, if 200 or 250, uh, where it'd be going. You're talking about somewhere on the order of eight to 10 years before you get the 80% mark, right? Am I doing my math right?
So, you're saying these equate to a tap, probably 2,300?
Yeah. So, tap, you know, I know some of the houses over there are really big, have six bathrooms and things like that, so they wind up having two taps per household. But in general, uh, there's still a lot of capacity. We've got time to get ready.
Mr. Junkin, that, I presume things don't flow evenly every day? And that you've got rainwater and stormwater and, and, you know, at what point, I mean, does 80% capacity allow you to accommodate those, uh, special occasions?
It does. And one of the things I was gonna, that next table we were.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm a glad you brought it up. This is good time. You kept me moving along. But basically, one of the things, discussions that I've had with staff, my staff tells me in the past when we've asked about, uh, that next permit to get additional capacity, if we do the physical changes, improve the pots and pans, to get more, more capacity out of that plant, the DNR, EPD, they're basically telling us, you gotta get your INI issue approved. If you don't know what INI is, INI is. Rainwater inflow and groundwater infiltration. It's water that gets in your system because of defects in the system that's not supposed to be there, rainwater and groundwater. You don't want those going in with your sanitary sewer because the capacity in that pipe is only meant for sanitary sewer. We have an excessive problem with, uh, INI on the island. Again, it's a comment to a lot of old utility systems, sewer systems, as the utilities wear out, as the levels from the buildings and homes deteriorate, they allow the water to get into the system that shouldn't. Certainly the old technologies that were put in 40, 50, 60 years ago and longer, those technologies weren't the best to keeping those kind of issues at bay, at bay anyway. And at this point, if you look at the numbers there, uh, one I've got on here in that table that talks about, for a normal treatment plant, the concentration of biological oxygen demand, the nutrients that come in, in sewage, somewhere on the order of about 300 milligrams per liter. For Dunbar Creek, on a normal, uh, day or a normal, normal month, we would be seeing about 140 milligrams per liter, a lot less. Why is it so much less? It's the same amount of stuff into the plant, but it's being diluted by the INI that's getting into our systems out there. And that last, that last box, it talks about the percent INI of the daily average flow. This is back to your question, Stan. The fact is, on average, we're about 55% of the water coming in that plant is groundwater or rainwater, INI. We've got to talk to the state folks before we make the next permit increase and decide what improvements they want. We're gonna propose to use this kind of as a benchmark. You know, when you see that concentration start to climb before it's supposed to be, then that means we've done something to the system to drive some of that inflow and infiltration that we're talking about. But this is basically taking into account the problems you're talking about. And yes, 80% gives you a little bit of swag, so it's another reason to start early and get started on those things so that you're ahead of the curve and don't get out there too close to your limits.
It's another reason to protect the trees, too.
Very good point. They absorb a lot of water, less paving.
On your 2,333 at the top?
Yep.
Can you help us out? How does that relate to the 5,000-plus lots that have already been approved for development?
Uh, maybe it's time to pull out our new camera statistics.
Yes, that's big. I'll just put it up on the screens, too.
Okay.
Would now be a good time to take a five-minute break?
Sure. I want to take a break. Set up our screen.
Okay, that'd be great. Thanks.
It is talking. I'm gonna let Todd Klein, Todd's our, uh, engineering director here, talk a little bit about what, what he and his staff pulled together. He tells me that this was a brainchild of, was it Pam's mind?
We're working with Pam's staffer closely on development. It's Todd Klein, senior engineer, Joint Works Service Commission. I'm in charge of leading the planning and construction division within Joint Works Service, which, through which all plans come through for, um, our remarks and notation, that we then forward back to the county staff, the county, uh, different planning commissions. So, it's a little difficult to see, we understand. Yeah, I'm zooming in digitally here. Everybody has visual access to, um, the things on the wall. Just overall, what is this map? Lot of discussion on capacities, and we're only talking about conveyance, wastewater conveyance capacity at the moment. Pump stations, pump stations, unfortunately. So, what is this map here? We're trying to keep it as simple as possible and as visual as possible so everybody can , for folks that need to know, can understand, general public can understand what it means. Red, green, yellow, three colors. Red is a basin that's currently overdesigned capacity, and as current stats, what we're saying, nobody can tie on. Yellow is essentially the same, but with a planned or scheduled upgrade to happen with, upon which we expect to see capacity come back again. And the green is, everything's at the moment sufficient to proceed with new connections. So, what we've done, if everybody understands what a sewer basin is, sewer basin essentially is the area with, from around which it all drains to a single pump station. So, be a gravity collection system. So, there's multiple, uh, basins. This map you've seen before you is St. Simon's Island. Uh, there's multiple basins, multiple pump stations throughout our whole system, about 160 pump stations on the island, roughly what Kirkland has at. It's a large number of basins. You can look at the county's neighborhoods, but sometimes the basins don't follow the neighborhood or, uh, boundaries, et cetera, they cross lines and whatnot. What this map can do, somebody can say, okay, I've got a lot, they can come to the map, look at it, see where they fall, if they're in a red, green, or yellow basin. This map right here is real basic information, beginning with just simple colors, red, green, yellow. We don't add any flow numbers, we don't add any how much capacity's available, anything like that. Internally, we have that information, but we're skipping a lot of that, not boring you with that info right now. Also, something you'll see on this map, I'll zoom in, we'll kind of tour around, and I'll show you examples of red, green, and yellow. Uh, also, the bottom corner, I'll use my pointer here, hopefully that shows, you see some information. This is what we're working with, Glen County Community Development, Pam's team. Our question to ourselves is, what is our current liability? In other words, what, what's out there, hanging out there? Somebody could come in tomorrow, apply for a building permit, and then tap on our system. And so, we ask for, what is the, what's the tally of the final platted lots? For somebody to pull a building permit, they have to be in possession of the final platted lot. A lot has to exist. There's a lot that happens to happen, uh, before then, if they don't, if it's not a final platted lot. Pam's team provided us with this information here. I'll try to zoom in.
Control plus?
Yeah. I'll get a little screen style here.
Okay.
Thank you. Probably have a hand I can use to pan around. Okay, what we did, we broke it down into red lots, yellow lots, a table of yellow lots, then a table of green lots, and how many vacant final platted lots exist within each basin. So, a four-digit number you see here, the 2,000, everything on St. Simon's begins with a two, a 2,000. Everything on North Mainland begins with a four, 4,000. Everything on South Main, the next 29 area, it's a three, 3,000. So, that's what the numbers mean. And simply, uh, looking at the greens here, 2,001, two designated St. Simon's Island, and one designated Pump Station One. Sort of, not necessarily, but below the number, the closer to the plant, the way, it doesn't, it's not a wonderful one, but it gives you an idea. As the system has expanded, the numbers go up and up and up, number, so you can, kind of give you an idea of reference, how close to the plant it lies or directly systematically it lies. So, 2,001, how many vacant lots are in that basin? Right now, from Glen County's info, we're seeing 60. Uh, you know, you can, I'll let you peruse these. By the way, these are sort of hot off the press, sort of hot off the approval from Mr. Junkin. We're gonna be posting these to the website for public information as well, so it's a lot easier to get on there and zoom in than it is. But after the meeting, we can definitely look at the hard copies and talk about it. Uh, red basins. So, if we go back up here to the red section, on St. Simon's, we've got one, two, three, four, five basins that are hard red. In other words, they're, uh, we would not allow a tie-in to those basins or within those basins at the moment, uh, and there is no scheduled time to upgrade those stations. Okay, so you see a couple here, 2,012, where's that basin? And, of course, 2,012, we see an example of, appears that, but 2,012, where that guy is? 2,012 is right here, okay? It's in Sipholms area. Well, that basin is essentially built out anyway, so there's no anticipated new taps we need unless somebody were to subdivide and exist and parse. That's a possibility, it happens in a lot of neighborhoods. But at the moment, we don't anticipate, you know, there's zero lots available, very empty lots. We don't anticipate any new connections happening in there. Now, if the basin's red, uh, where do we go from there? Okay, you'll notice the yellows. What do the yellows mean? Means there's a schedule in place. I'll go up here, upper left-hand corner. So, let's say, uh, 2,002, that's a good example. 2,002. Since two thousand and two is red, those basins are also red at the moment, because they must flow through two thousand and two. Two thousand and sixty-four and two thousand and eighteen. If it's yellow, we create a table saying what other basins are affected by that basin, and then we put the expected upgrade completion. In this case, September eighth, two thousand and seventeen, that relates to our first successful unsolicited proposal that was executed, all right? Pumps and equipment have been ordered, they're on the way, we expect that upgrade to happen within, you know, bicep and gray, and we're going to be, believe us, pretty conservative on that number there.
So Matt, you ever understand that this is the one that has paid for their own upgrade?
Correct, yes, sir, correct.
And that's Frederica, is that right?
This would be a certain hotel development that, in the two thousand and two basin, around Ocean Boulevard. So...
This is, I think, you know, this is along.
Public, that's not the map, he's up there.
Correct.
No, he, he was talking about the, down here on Ocean Boulevard.
Correct, two thousand and two is on south end of the island, we know where that is.
Well, I thought that he said that, before he was warning me before, Frederica was the one that...
It was Frederica.
That, that was the one that they had paid for their own improvements, and that, so it's just misunderstanding.
The, which one will be, so one of the girls, yeah, so Seepalm's up when you're talking about, before?
No, it's, it's not important.
Okay, got it, got it. Happy to please help clarify, I mean. So two thousand and two basin, we do have an executed unsolicited proposal that's in hand, we can give you an anticipated schedule for upgrade. When that upgrade happens, we expect a nice amount of capacity brought up. We're not nailing it down until we get the pumps installed, we run it, bring our drawdowns, drawdown tests, then we can determine what our available capacity is about for the other connections coming on.
Does that include stormwater?
Everything coming through the station at the resident. So that includes I and I, that includes, yes. So we're just strictly looking, what can the system pump and move, how much water can it move, in the condition it's in right now? No holes plugged, or anything like that. So the more holes we plug, the more capacity we free up for, for use, correct.
All right, sure, I understand. We don't have the stormwater.
Right, right. I understand, I just didn't know that agreement.
Nothing intentional.
You know, yeah, I understand.
Nothing intentional, but Sherman Elliott's got a favorite story he likes to tell about in two thousand and two basin, where, I'll let you tell that story real quick.
Oh, you were right, when, when, when the tide came in, it all went to the plant. So we got that fixed, Kirk, go ahead, Kirk.
To clarify, Todd is correct in stating that the drawdowns, when we do the drawdowns, everything that's passed through the station. When we do the calculations, the reason they're not posted is because it's a moving target, every day somebody's coming in to attack. When we do the calculations, it's strictly dependent on REU counts and those standardized format, so it does not include any I and I.
Correct, thanks Kirk, for the click, yeah, so absolutely. So we're going to population numbers based straight on master plan, and that's from house counts, that's, you know, those are Glen County's traffic area studies in the past and whatnot, so that's for that information to determine the capacity or the needed capacity for that station, that basin, yes. So it does not include stormwater, right, thanks Kirk. So that's an example of what a yellow basin is, two thousand and two upgraded process, hence we turn that guy yellow. And if there's anything else really of, okay, this is another interesting table here, again, information from Glen County as far as lot counts, total numbers in our green basins, and these are buildable lots, final platted, buildable lots, red basins, you know, we also include private, so are they on septic? Are they currently served? If they're not served by water and sewer, or sewer in this case, we're focused on, they would have to do a septic tank. There's currently a hundred ninety-eight, according to Glen County, a hundred and eighty lots available that could submit for a building permit tomorrow, and then lots beyond the service areas, three oh three, so. Total number we have at hand right now, two thousand and four, so a little over two thousand buildable lots on Saint Simons as it stands right now. Now, keep in mind, a lot, that can be a half acre residential, that could be a ten acre parcel. So these are lot counts, what's the next iteration of these numbers? Will County go to this next level, zoning, how do we incorporate the zoning in here? Obviously, a, it's been talked about, we grade everything, measure everything, REUs, try to get everything on the same map with apple. REU is just a residence equivalent to, you know, three hundred gallons per day. A restaurant will use many more REUs than a single family residence.
Yes, also...
When you say lot count, does that break out condos? So it'd be like, for instance, on the Marshall Building, it has, let's say, twelve residential units, is that counting just one, or is that counting twelve?
Good question. And that's what we're talking about right now, that's the next step of this map right here. This is only saying individual parcels.
Okay.
That parcel could be zone commercial, that parcel could be zone multifamily, it could be much more than one REU. So don't think of this as, there's only a liability hanging out there of two thousand and four REUs, there's, or two thousand and four single family residenials. A portion of that, we're all going to determine this, a portion of that is obviously commercial, because obviously multifamily, etc. And don't forget, those lots in some cases can be subdivided, again, you can't see one lot turning to four, you know, you see that all the time. So, next step above that, okay, commercial, multifamily, whatever it is, what's the worst-case scenario we could see? This is where we try to get into planning or projecting, to see what our system needs to be able to do. You know, ten acre parcel, you know, is that, if it gets zoned appropriately and permanently platted for a hundred lots, is that ten acres, ten lots a year, for ten years? Is that, you know, five lots a year, for twenty years? We don't know. We can make best guesses, working for the county, we can try to do that, but we're going to depend on the county to help us out with the trends, to see what our projected needs are going to be, depending on what parcels and how they're zoned, and what existing preliminary flats are still valid, exist out there. So I know, I understand, they have a lifespan on them as well. So there's a lot of moving parts to this thing. It's really, should be looked at more of a model, a dynamic model than a static thing, by any means, really hard to hit a button, compute, and there you go. It's a lot of moving parts to... So, just to kind of, and of course, we, we don't just serve the island, we also serve the rest of Glen County. So North Mainland, we'll do a little tour real quickly on it. There's City Bronson area on South North Mainland, you see a lot of, or several red basins in here, see some agreements too, but you do see some red ones, so we do have capacity issues there that we have to inform the county and the city during the review process. You'll also see yellow basins in here. So these yellow basins coming down to four thousand and five, in the upstream from four thousand and five, are part of the initial forty forty-eight force main reroute, it's a project, bids, actually, we see bids tomorrow on that. It's the first step in the first four phases, or the four phases of squats. So the next step beyond that, we have an RFQ out for the first phase of squats, it'll be a design build. But those projects are going to help these yellow basins as we go north, go around the backside of Floodsey, if I can get the next map. Continue traveling up around the airport area and serve Harrier Jerkers Boulevard, ninety-nine, and then up to the north and western side of square twenty-five, all those subdivisions that we'd like to be able to build at this moment, but currently can't because of capacity issues. So that's why we're showing them as yellow, because we have a scheduled plan, definitely for forty forty-eights reroute, and phase one of squats, and then we assumed, I think it was a two to three-year completion of all squats. So that's why the basins are now yellowed, but you still do see some red basins that currently, we don't have a solid plan for. Now, what do you do with the red, or let's talk about South Mainland, too. So South Mainland doesn't get a whole lot of attention, but there are red basins in South Mainland that are affecting some projects in that area, South Port area, as well as Seventeen South, and then out of Buck Swamp Road, and Peninsula. So, now, what do you do if there's a red basin? And we don't have, currently have a plan on the books to complete that, it may be called out in the master plan, but if we don't have a scheduled, you know, the next five years or so, if we don't have a scheduled plan for improvement internal, if there's an interest, that's where we get in the unsolicited proposal that's we're talking about. That's where a developer or someone with a project can come to us and see exactly what the issue is, it's a pump upgrade and a pump station, or it's an increase in the force main size, or something like that. Perhaps we can work together with them in an unsolicited proposal fashion, make those improvements ahead of any schedule we may have for the areas there. So, that's pretty much my, still, Mr. Jones.
Let me cut it off.
I know these are hard to see from where you sit, we can talk about them afterwards, and I can answer any questions to your call.
These y'all are, you got a draft on these, but you said you're going to put them out on the web as a kind of general planning tool.
Got it, correct.
Y'all don't foresee this being any kind of regulatory? Those decisions, as far as is there capacity for this, is still going to be?
Right, right, so you would still, we'll still provide the county staff with a definitive answer, you know, obviously this is for informational purposes, I'm sure we'll have a hefty disclaimer on there, but for informational purposes, the final say would be a letter from us, or the advice of county staff, gets incorporated into the review, carried from there. Right, that's what we kept it kind of bland, we're just colors, we don't put any numbers on here as far as REUs available, pass, etc. Trying to keep them as simple as possible, too, easy to...
This, this will at least encourage folks that have questions about capacity on one of those yellows. Hey, I better call, I better call the folks at D W C hub.
We found out with our tax maps online that, as the lines get good and bright, I think that is gospel, even though it's may or may not, you know. But I think, I mean, you know, just sort of buys up front, this isn't the, this isn't whether you take it to the planning, to the planning commission saying, hey, look, I'm in a brick basin, that's still going to be a decision, I think, point by point.
That's a good point, that's a very good point, Paul, because even turning a green basin, you come in needing a hundred taps, and there's only fifty available, better be talking to somebody before you go in and make your plans.
Good point, and I know Will mentioned about Ms. Thompson not even accepting applications without having evidence from joint water and sewer, they've done a new deal just up front, explored the capacity situation. We're all for that, we're a hundred percent on board with that, we prefer they come in ahead of time, rather than after application's submitted, and, you know, you hit the back and forth then, let's get it all done up from us, so that's a good, we appreciate the county doing that. You have a question? Thank you.
That kind of, that kind of wraps up our presentation today for joint water and sewer, trying to answer the questions that you all had. If you've got some specific follow-up questions now, or just want to contact us later, feel free. We do appreciate your votes, and we'll pass the cap, the hammer out, it should go out.
Well, I just still want to say, now, the planning commission, we certainly appreciate you having this meeting.
Appreciate you.
We've had a lot of questions, and we are very thankful that you were with me with the Mainland and the island planning commission, and especially thank you to Ms. Brett.
We try to, we try to sound it.
Really, that's, fuck it up.
Can I ask a couple of this side questions? Some neighbors, on Lee's beach, asked what's going on over there, because there's been some trucks pumping things out, were there for a long time, is there?
Where's the sand?
Because on Lee's beach, there's something, and it, you know, you just put a new system in out there, they're wondering what's happening.
Yes, there is a new system, leak like a sieve. We're working on correcting that problem. We're actually using that as a poster child, part of the plans that we have, they edit some of the things, is benchmarking I and I stuff, to get a little bit tighter viewpoint of the amount of contributions we have, the leaking pipes, so that we can better correct our funds. The master plan gave us a great overview, now we've got to drill down a little closer and determine where we just check our funds. From preliminary examination, we determined that that's the twenty-sixty-three basin, East Beach, all drains, so the station that we titled twenty-sixty-three, and it had a significant amount of I and I. Right now, we are almost fairly dry, so all of this is ground one, which means it flows twenty-four seven. It's a lot of rain due, it's a lot of bed base, it's all the time. And we have partnered with a couple of companies, brought their do some work, Caroline Corporation is one of them, and they're doing some injection routing, they're doing a variety of tasks of light cleaning on the lines, injection routing, and then flow monitoring as well at the same time, in addition to our in-house flow monitor, so that we can tighten that basin up. We're hoping to use that as a poster child, totally dry, it's the perfect location because it's right up on the Atlantic, so if we can do that, that basin is giving us strong...
So that's why you're having leaking pipes? It's not inferior product, it's because of the nature of the...
There, there are a variety of reasons why. Earlier, we talked about corrosive gases, which are omnipresent in this sewer system, especially here in the South Coast. We have a situation where once the tiniest of leaks start, because of the type of soils that we have, sugar sand, it siphons that sand in, which starts the progressive failure. So it isn't necessarily that, I'm saying that the contract to put it in bad to begin, but at some point, something fails, something moves. When it moves, it started to leak. As it started to leak, it exacerbates the problem, and next thing you know, you have a large amount of sand and groundwater coming in, until you have catastrophic failure, we're trying to avoid the catastrophic failure. If you identify it, you can catch it beforehand, and there are technologies allow us to go inside the pipe and push routing material, it's a jelly-like substance that mixes with the soil matrix, and stops the water and the sand from coming in. So therefore, you stop the water, you arrest the bedding sand from coming in, therefore you stop the problem, which we all see up on top, as being a roller coaster ride up in that first trial.
I want to say one other thing, Stan, you know, in addition to the pipes that get put in the ground, that we maintain, the lattes that serve individual homes, the piece that goes on private property owners, you know, those things can have problems as well. I've seen folks even turn around and intentionally dig them up, connect their drains in their yards to it, to get, get the ground, the stormwater out of their yards. So there's a lot of things, Kirk's right, there's a lot of things that could make a brand-new system. In fact, one of my first challenges when I got into the water and sewer utilities a thousand years ago, we had put in a branded federal grant system in one of the rural areas of county where I was at. Three years after we put it in, every time we had a heavy rain, the system was overwhelmed. So we go through, and we smoke test it, we find at least a half a dozen places where people were draining their yards using our sanitary sewer.
But you can't make very much progress every time you do something. Last question, I promise.
No, that's right.
What about the sewers on Seattle? Because I've been told that that is a major problem on Seattle, that, that everybody, you know, most of the houses are on septic tanks.
I, I, I don't know, I know there's, there may be, I don't know the specifics of any problems. I know I'd love for them to tell me they need to jump onto our system if we've got capacity, so we can collect those tap fees, but I don't know the specifics of their system.
It's five hundred houses over there.
Five or six hundred?
On, on septic.
They're on septic now. I don't know how many.
They can afford tapping.
Sorry? Yeah, I, I believe they can.
Thank you very much. I think that was very informative, I got some certification on quite a few things also, and if there's nothing else, I'd like to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, good luck.